So.
Go home.
You don't need to be here.
You want me to go home?
Yeah.
Please.
We're working on a three hour.
What's that?
We just didn't want to rehash the whole story.
Well, we don't have to.
We would.
We don't have for next four or five minutes.
I can't hear squat.
Yeah, you're seven hours already.
No, I'm not.
Probably nine or ten people aren't.
And it's eight hours yesterday, so.
So what, what did you decide? Would they all come in there and take?
Just give us the number on your coal burn.
Yeah.
And the answer is yes.
I'm sorry.
Just give us the number on the coal burn and then we'll figure out what less than the armpit money. There should be about a hundred and forty thousandish.
The box looks like, the box looks like it's gonna be about a hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred?
Alright.
Yeah, it's gonna, you know, it's, it's gonna take a little more, a little bit of winter training. Instead of the box will be bigger. I have a, Dan, uh, who did help in this morning has a good idea. They call JJ's concrete. The price from them too, they get cheaper, they get civil cons that we use. But when they do kind of, they, they bring an engineer.
Do the hydrology study?
Yes. And then they also do, while we're setting the box, we'll have guys.
JJ's, no, no, no. Ken Burden.
So.
We'll have, we'll have Jeff Ealing chap, I'll sign off on the capacity in their category.
That's, that's what I get. So, that was just talking to me, uh, today. So I will follow up with the height and reach. What me and Matt did is we went on Civic Con's website and they've got where they make boxes. And, and they was, uh, like I said, there was a hundred.
Does JJ the next one?
It could be.
And they, what do you know?
They made confusion. JJ, they make boxes? It's a big place. They're not, oh boy, that's cool. Yeah, by.
We're getting one down the road.
Very close.
They still got the marble getting filed for the next week.
I had to go measure all of them.
We. So you got.
We're part of it.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Big thing on our.
JJ, it used to be a bone.
We only. Yeah, I heard that.
I'm not.
There goes some stuff. Oh, ready?
Come on in, Greg. Come and chat and believe yourself, invitation period.
Back here, please. Father God, we give you thanks that, uh, for all the many blessings of life that we've received from you. It's, uh, we appreciate you watching over us during our budget hearings and all the meetings this week. It's, uh, we've taken, taken under and, uh, and look for your guidance as we solve, solve accounting problems and that. As we, uh, entering harvest, we appreciate, uh, everybody's, uh, here looking over us, uh, for safety. It's, uh, for a boundless and good harvest here. All this year, amen.
Councilman Kelly Brand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
The road, all, please.
Mike Morse, President.
President.
John Hillibrand, Vice President.
Here.
Mary Chrismore. Here. Jay Yocum.
Yocum.
Richard Chatten.
Here.
Dan Wrightmeyer.
Here.
Kevin Meyer.
Yep.
Should have all council votes are present. Uh, on the agenda, we need to add Vincent Township fire, Johnson Township fire. And we will delete Monroe City for this evening.
That's Blue Jean.
Blue Jean, correct. Now, uh, hang on, Rich, Blue Jean Center Indiana Trail Program is another thing.
Okay. No, it's two separate things.
Right, two separate things. Right. So if those amend, amendments being made, we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I want that motion.
Second. Thanks. Motion made by Councilman Yocum, second by Kevin Meyer to approve the budget.
Agenda.
Agenda. I've been watching him for two days. Yeah, thank you, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Except for the health that he's gonna need. Seven, zero. Everybody had a chance for review of the meeting minutes from last meeting. Do you have a motion? Motion by Councilman Chrismore.
Second.
Second by Councilman Yocum. It's gonna go on. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion goes seven, zero. Uh, Tillelville Sewer District. Nothing there. Okay, this is something new, um, on the space committee. We need to assign two councilmen to the, um, the old space committee, but it's the new space committee. Who would like to do that?
Sure, I can have it.
Okay. Okay.
One.
So you.
Three.
Party six?
Three.
Two and one commission.
Two and one commission.
Yes. And anybody can go to it, it's just, that's part of board, certainly. Right, that's right, that board, that's right. Anyway, uh, motion for Councilman Hillibrand and Councilman Wrightmeyer. Motion. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Meyer. Second by Councilman Yocum.
Oh, why?
Why you get whichever? Get on my nerves. You two in the bathroom, I'm, I'm.
She didn't change her name.
Anyway, let's have a vote on this.
Holy sales.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero. And the one upstairs. Okay. Additionals, this would be ours for the, uh, the four courts recording system.
It's more new, new business?
Yeah, that's what's on the agenda. Review Monroe City twenty twenty-six budget is done. Then we have Blue Jean, oh, I'm sorry, Blue Jean Center Indiana.
It's a.
Councilman Frank Meyer, you're up.
I was asked by Jake Scott, who I believe is President of Blue Jean Center. He has something to do with it, to, for us, ask us for a letter of support for a trail proposed around Blue Jean Center up and down Monroe City. That's all it was, he was asking for a letter of support, I believe. Um, attorney is aware of that, can you take care of that for us?
Yeah.
If we all agree, if we all agree.
We, we'll listen to that.
We need a motion for that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Yes, motion made by Councilman Meyer, seconded by Councilman Wrightmeyer on the Monroe City. Blue Jean Center Trail Program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Commander. That's seven, two, zero. Our attorney will be writing a letter to them to back this program up. Want those additional now, do you?
Johnson.
What about the fire department?
Trying to avoid those guys. If you guys want to come out or you can talk material on today.
Do you guys already have copies of the budget?
No.
No.
Nope, nope.
Actually, I do. So I just wanna speak no more than ten or fifteen minutes. I, I do just have a couple of things I wanna talk about that I really wanna get. Uh, I, I, I got. Uh.
What more?
Uh, our budget, uh, most line I would stay the same, but it is fully funded as always. Uh, if you have any questions specifically either now or later, you can ask me. Uh, but I, I do wanna talk about what's to come and I know that you guys all know what's to come at some point, uh, if things don't change. And I thoroughly believe things will change because all over the state, fire departments are gonna be really struggling significantly. If they don't change, uh, a- as you well know, right now, the maximum lit for fire is point oh four in the new system. And right now, we're at point oh five, so as you well know, that's not gonna work out very well. Uh, and with the tax credits and the, the new way of determining A V, uh, it drops. At least the Vincent Township Fire District, our A V drops significantly enough that it affects us in our caps. Because our caps have been pretty low in the past because, uh, our rate has not been that high. But with the drop of the A V is forcing our rate up, which will force our caps up. Uh, so it's just a, a bad cycle all the way around, from lit to, uh, uh, property tax. And while I know that people don't wanna pay property tax or lit, uh, I, I can assure you, we will be here to ask for the full amount of point oh four, which is not going to be enough. Uh, and we are right now lobbying the legislature to do two things. Uh, one is to raise the point oh four max to like the current public safety lit is. And the second is, and I, I don't know that we'll get anywhere with either one, but the second is for public safety, we, we're, we're gonna ask, that does not have to be renewed every year. That once it's established, uh, and I think we're wanting police, uh, Chiefs Association lobbyists to, to work on some of those things. Uh, because he, I, I realize for Highway Department and everybody else, it's also a problem, but we can't hire firefighters and police officers and not know from year to year, we're gonna get the funding to keep them, cause if that's the case, we're not gonna be able to trap them. Uh, they're gonna go someplace that has that ability. Uh, so those are the things that I'm concerned about, as I know you are concerned about. Uh, the other thing is, and we talked about this last year at the budget, at some point, uh, in the near future, probably January, I will be back, as I always am, to ask for, for the renewal of our loan. But as I explained last year, if you remember, that we have run into a significant issue in build time of fire trucks. Sometimes as much as three years.
Yeah.
And, uh, D L G F will not let me come and get official approval and not borrow the money till the truck comes in. So then I have to go to the bank and borrow the money on a truck that I'm not gonna get for three years, which they don't really like it, it doesn't make much sense. So our municipal planners and our attorney and, I'm not asking tonight because our attorney probably needs to talk it through about this as well, uh, want us to come and you guys, if you would, make a motion that you will support the loan officially when it's time, so that we can order the truck and it can be processed and then we get the official approval, uh, when it's time to pay for it. Uh, because i- i- it's not working out, we're getting behind on, I mean, we're gonna, and not me, cause I'll be gone, but, uh, uh, somebody will have a problem with all, all of our equipment at some point because we can't keep up. And, uh, so that's the only way we know how to do it. So, uh, I'll, I'll work with Mike and Drew and our people to get that done and be back, so. Any questions for me on the budget?
There are any liabilities to the county on my, uh.
No, it's all supported by a, a dent tax rate that's separate, it's just for the fire district. And, uh, it, because our board is appointed by the commissioners. An appointed board cannot create public debt, so the council, uh, just like the budget, the council is who approves our debt.
So you think the lit's too low?
The, the new lit is all about, but much of it will be out.
I mean, our point zero five.
It, it will be too low with the property tax hit we're gonna take. And I'd be happy to share our, uh, municipal, uh, advisors or consultants numbers with anybody that says it. I, I'm leery to do that now because I, I am not the kinda guy that wants to stand up and try to create panic to give what, what people are saying, well, he's just saying that so he gets what he wants and that's not the case. So I, I don't wanna create any kind of, uh, oh, you're gonna lose your fire station because. Yeah, to, to do, uh, because we can't pay for it, but reality is reality, but I, so I'd be happy to share that with anybody, uh, that, that wants to see that at some point. Any questions on the budget?
As far as, uh, staff rates going into next year?
I don't know yet. Um, honestly, we try to bear what the city of Vincent does, because there for a while, as you all know, we were trading people back and forth. We've pretty much got it pretty close now and we're, we honestly both try to keep it pretty close so that we're not that, oh, trading back and forth doesn't help anybody. So, uh, I, I, I don't, I did build, build some in obviously for races, but I don't know yet what that is, but I'm happy to offlet. Yeah, it will be very similar to whatever the city of Vincent's passes.
No, you're good.
So, okay. Any other questions?
You're willing to make a motion on that, right?
You will, you'll need to make a motion on each of them, but you're on the way. It's just not binding.
Okay, okay.
Oh, sorry, this one's binding, I'm sorry.
Do it here.
You're sure that's right?
If you can't get it, that's no problem. That's fine, we'll do it next time.
Okay, so we do nothing else?
This is just their topic.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We'll get your fire department.
Yeah, man, this one is mine, so.
I'm not gonna make a sweep like him, dude.
We appreciate it more than I do, so.
I'm just up for questions, pal. They weren't, we can probably force the end, but only have two guys. They're, they're only eight to five, they're just volunteers. And we don't have them.
They're good for two, what's in?
Thank you, sir.
Can we hear Samuel highlights?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe I'll, there could be one.
Any questions?
No. Good luck, thanks.
We'll see y'all next month.
Enjoy, Dan.
See you guys.
Hey.
See you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional appropriations and transfers.
Probably my time to shine here.
I had.
Okay, alright, you tell me.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
Now, first of all, is our, uh, supporting the four court systems and non-scanning with the new recording equipment. The, uh, we've been through it, shot, bad shape, it doesn't function properly and that can be very, a very critical situation. We have high level crime or whatever's being tried, it could roll away, so. Working with the judges to put together a package, uh, our C P A has recommended that we take the equipment out of general fund and reimburse it with safety lit in another form to balance it all out. So, uh, as of right now, speaking to the judges yesterday, uh, everything has been ordered, or most of them have been ordered and should be there shortly, so. That's a good sign. So if you take it, need a motion to approve that? Motion by Councilman Yocum, second. Second by Councilman Rich Chapman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, zero. Is that a roll this way?
Well, I'm a secret, guys.
Yeah, glad you could make it, though.
Um, I actually have three, so, um, the first one is, um, an additional appropriation, um, for what I talked about yesterday, a lat tech, which is our scheduling system. Um, we used out of the twelve point two fund in previous years, this year to make some of that is not allowed to be taken out of the twelve point two. Um, so this year, we need thirty-seven hundred dollars, um, reimbursed to all supplies, um, just to pay for that. So it was due, um, August thirty-first, so we went ahead and paid it for all supplies, we just need to reimburse that for that. And then for next year's budget, budget, we did ask for that line item.
All in favor, let.
Aye.
Motion made by Councilman Yocum, seconded by Councilman Hillibrand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero.
All right, and then the s- uh, second one is, um, the storm a few weeks back, white heat struck and, um, took down our battery backups. Um, so we had to replace those, um, which was eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Um, we asked that we leave, um, the back money from that contractual services to the equipment maintenance, um, so we can pay for that. Um, we did try to make a claim through insurance, but, um, insurance suggested that we should not make a claim because it's under twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a transfer on form on there?
Yeah.
All in favor, transferring the eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine thirty-six.
I'll say.
Motion made by Councilman Chad, seconded by Councilman Meyer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero.
One more. So, right now, we've been having a lot of part-time help, um, with our full-time, not the fully staff. Um, so we were down quite a bit for the part-time help, or the part-time budget. We have a vacant spot for full-time and we're asking, um, eighteen thousand dollars be transferred from one of the vacant positions to the fourteen hundred line item to the part-time, um, just for the rest of the year. We have two people in training right now, um, so I, I don't think we'll be able to hire that vacant spot until the end of the year. So we should have money for that. Just moving money from full-time to part-time.
All in favors, or, make a motion by Councilman Hillibrand, seconded by Ms. Chrismore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero.
Thank you, guys.
JJ's not here, the sheriff's not here, uh, he's wanting to move eighteen thousand dollars. Two point is, uh, how do you count, do you meditate on it? He's like, do you have a chance for the?
We did.
Yeah, yeah. So that will be set, it's make official with what are here.
It was Richie and Jake.
Okay, very good. Now, County Highway.
Okay.
Uh, we've got one that's, uh, we've got a check from Martin County Highway Department, we sold our tin box and we're gonna use the funds to purchase a new roller.
How much you get, uh?
Fifteen grand.
Need a motion to approve the fifteen thousand dollars, County Highway?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Chad, approved by Councilman Meyer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That's seven, two, zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriate, the additional measure of reimbursement.
I'll say.
Motion made by Councilman Wrightmeyer, seconded by Councilman Meyer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero.
So that's ain't that money coming back, huh?
Yeah, hey, yeah.
That's a one.
Yes, yes, sir.
We like that kinda money.
Yeah, that's, that's good money, yeah.
It did, in article.
In article, that's, that's a on the back end.
Okay, the next we have a transfer, this is a brilliant one. It is me, transferring, yeah, yeah, eight thousand dollars for additional funds in the line item due to low balance. Superintendent Chad Reynolds, so. Take it easy on me, Dan.
All, motion made by Councilman Yocum, seconded, seconded by Councilman Wrightmeyer.
I'm assuming this does difference in paper.
Yeah.
The previous one.
Yeah.
So, right, so this one, yeah. I don't have any squawk over that now, but I mean, it should have been well beforehand.
I, I wondered that, I wondered that myself. It's, uh, so just so.
Councilman.
Do you want these?
No, I have three.
Motion is made, seconded.
We talked about it, I mean, it's just, it's what it is, but it's not, I should have been there, so.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero.
Or which one?
On the, uh, highway.
Did they count that much?
I need it. It's a grand dollar.
Eight thousand?
It says eight, eight thousand.
Okay, I thought you already did it, okay.
No, we're just wrapping it up.
Okay.
Then.
Just know that wasn't directed to you. I like my room, it's beautiful. It's snowing.
I can tell you about this one, if you want me doing it.
How about her?
Um, on the assessors line, um, the generals, it was their two field deputies. And she's talked about it yesterday about, uh, paying them out of one line and they kind of ran over. So then now they're gonna reimburse that line and then start paying them out at twelve twenty-four. Lou, when Lou and, um, Woody were here.
Oh, yeah.
So if all the money's there, they're just moving it to take care of a low balance.
There's none of ours going out then, right? Just moving it around.
Yeah.
Okay, that's got it. Need a motion to move it around? Motion made by Councilman Yocum, seconded by Councilman person Chrismore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes seven, two, zero. Okay. Vacant positions. Anybody? Vacant positions. How to finish business? Okay, before we do council reports, uh, you know, I did, or we pretty much took care of you.
I might have had care of.
Yeah, you're good. What do you think, uh?
Thank you.
Yeah. Wanna?
Thanks for putting us on the agenda. I'm Phil O'Hever, I'm at, uh, Wagler Custom Homes, L three R K, L N C. L three R K operates the panel shop in Sandmore, Indiana. And the reason for being on the agenda this evening is we had, we rented an abatement in March of twenty twenty-one. Unfortunately, we did a very poor job of completing the annual forms to let you know that we did what we were gonna do. So what I'm here for is to ask that you allow us to take the abatement for twenty four table twenty twenty five and and then for twenty five table twenty twenty six, which those forms aren't due yet, but we do have the forms filled out. Not sure that I have them in the exact order yet, but I think the information is on the forms. Originally, when we had asked for the abatement, we were projecting salaries to be an increase of ninety four employees up to one hundred and eighteen, I believe. And our payroll was four million dollars, and we we surpassed that by a landslide. Just to jump ahead to the year in which we're asking for, our payroll was twelve million, a little over twelve million dollars with actual employee count at one hundred and ninety three. Our investment. Sorry, I told, yeah, that's right. The total investment and everything was both projected to be four million, and we are at eight million. Excuse me. And we're about eight million overall. So we are, apologize for our lack of timeliness on those reports, but we'll definitely be grateful for it.
We do appreciate it, thanks, man.
Yeah. It's it's been a, it's been a pretty good project, and the firemen that were here, we appreciate our firemen because we did have a fire last month.
That's my next question, that's how bad was it?
It took the building down. That's the the chipper.
That's one behind the main building.
It's not, the main building is right along sixty seven.
Right.
This is back a couple roads in Sandone, and it was a fire related tracks. And it, they did, they cleaned it up, and I believe that Larry told me today they picked it up, they're permanent, or they're expecting it soon. And so they'll be rebuilding that, but they're going to improve the structure of that and take some precautions to hopefully guard against another fire, but then also control the noise as well. That fire, however, did kind of put a dampener on the plants that, when you visited with us.
Right.
We were talking about, we were talking about putting up a equipment repair shop. You do work on the the trucks and some of the equipment and manufacturing equipment right along sixty seven. Larry talked with neighbors up there and got a little bit of pushback on that. He wants to be a good neighbor, so it's not off the table yet, it's just going to be in a different location. So any, we do have plans for a couple of projects up there that we may come back and ask for a abatement for, but it looks like that's been pushed off until twenty twenty six.
No other plan on buildings and units up there that may be built, maybe get?
Yes.
I assume so. Was that it? Same. Remember our our D C board, they talked about building that. We figured where the.
Back right on the main street. Back right.
Yeah.
Mary, the city of Vincent's not out of the way either.
Well, you used to fly them once down there on the eleventh street, didn't you? Was Larry Carter?
I'm not familiar with that, I don't know.
Yeah, like eleven, twelve.
Oh, yes, Larry. I think they're all full.
They are. They're beautiful.
And that's a perfect location.
Yeah.
We really appreciate it, you guys, David.
You can take a formal motion to approve it, the C F one's filed. I'm waiting, he's retained grants, which were out of Davie's County, so I'm waiting for his resolution for approval. But it would be bringing the twenty twenty four, which will be applicable this year. We would extend that to next year and then basically push the abatement back two years. And we're so late in the year, if we applied this year, that we'd have to undo a bunch of things, so it's easier to extend it two years. And since he's obviously in compliance with what he's setting, he's going to do this way over that, there's no issue with waiting. The lack of danger to make the big.
You want us to not make a motion there?
You can motion to approve it, and then when I have a resolution, I'll make sure it's legally fine and everything's hanging on.
Okay, go ahead, make that motion, extend that for, extend that out.
You make the motion.
Big business, everybody.
Seconded by Councilman Yelich, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Nothing heard, motion passes seven two zero.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, appreciate it, man.
We will be in touch, I'm sure.
Larry doing all right?
He is, he he's a little disappointed right now, but it's an opportunity to make a effort.
And here's what it is.
And he did ask you to reach out to the volunteer fire department that's up there.
I think they all were.
Yeah, well, yeah. So, but he is going to reach out, we have reached out to the township.
Yeah.
That's the number, we've got contact information, we're going to reach out to them and thank them personally, and then I don't know what Larry has in mind, but I think he's going to try and give a donation of some kind.
Yeah, I should appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks. Ken, right. Thank you. Announce council reports. Councilman Chad, you have any? Mary? So?
I do not.
I don't either.
None being heard. Our next meeting will be October fourteenth, five P M, probably back at City Hall. Need a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Motion made by Councilman Yelich, seconded by Councilman Chrismore. He is adjourned.
A lot of people here.